Good evening. I want to call the meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Town of Washington Planning Board. We start off by saying the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, which stands one nation, one liberty and justice for all.
Just want to note for the secretary that we do have a forum present. And I would ask if the members have received minutes, compass of the minutes from the last meeting.
Yes.
Has anyone had any corrections, changes? Can I get a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Seconded?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. So, we have one public hearing on tonight. This is an application for a five lot subdivision of a 90.87 acre parcel. We've been workshopping this application for many months. We've determined after holding a different public hearing on the question that this application will proceed as a conventional subdivision. We then held another public hearing on seaker and environmental issues and last month adopted an exact format. Tonight, we're holding a public hearing on that application and it's on the preliminary plat. We're going to give the applicant's representative opportunity to summarize the application for everybody and then we will open the public hearing to public comments. Jennifer?
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. My name is Jennifer Van Tylle. I'm just going to speak for a minute or two to describe the subdivision that's the subject of tonight's public hearing. The property is located at the intersection of the east end of Woodstock Road and Stanford Road. So this is Stanford Road, obviously, and this is Woodstock Road. This is a proposal to subdivide a 90-plus acre parcel into five lots. And it's interesting to note that the subdivision only creates three new building lots. There are already homes on two of the lots. And I'll just go through the numbering because we've all been confused by the numbering of the lots. This is lot one, lot two, lot three, lot four, and lot five. So the parcels that already have houses on them are lot three, which is the site of the existing yellow farmhouse, and lot four, which is the southwestern lot. I'm going to just review the acreages of the parcels. Lot one is 23 and a half acres in size. Lot two is 10.1 acres in size. Lot three is 5.3 acres in size. Lot four is 23 and a half acres in size. And lot five is 28.4 acres in size. Now, this map has been part of our submission to the town for months and months. But we've recently been speaking about maps that show the various constraints on the property. But I think this map is very helpful because it shows the actual boundaries of the proposed lots. I'm going to point out the location of the existing houses because some of you who might live on Woodstock Road will be familiar with those. I pointed out the yellow farmhouse and this is the location of the house that is on lot four in the southwest corner of the lot. Now, a key part of the proposal here has been to designate the location of the proposed houses on the three new lots. Very often, when property is subdivided, it's up to the lot purchaser to decide where to put the home on the parcel. Here, we've been very intentional about where the houses should be placed. We've reviewed visibility from surrounding lots, et cetera. So I'm going to point out the outlined blue rectangles on the three lots that would allow new homes. Are outlined here in a blue dashed line. And those areas are obviously much smaller than the lot as a whole. So the building envelope on lot one is 2.17 acres. And the building envelope on lot two is 1.48 acres. And the building envelope on lot five is 1.08, I'm sorry, 1.08 acres. So obviously, the lots all meet the zoning standard as to minimum lot size. This property is in a five-acre zoning district. And the overall average lot size in the subdivision is 18 acres a lot. The average lot size for the vacant lots that would allow the placement of new homes is 20.67 acres per lot. I guess I just mentioned one other thing relevant to the actual subdivision is this parcel was, has been basically forever divided in two pieces by Woodstock Road. And what we've tried to do in this subdivision is limit any new driveways as much as possible to assure that the scenic quality of Woodstock Road is protected and that the subdivision fits in with the neighborhood. So you can see here that there's only one new driveway that's north of Woodstock Road and that's for lot number one, shown here. And there's only one new driveway south of Woodstock Road and that is located right here. And similarly, only one new driveway on Stanford Road, which is located right here. So the new homes to be built, obviously, this part of town does not have any municipal septic systems or municipal water systems. So each of the individual homes would be served by well and septic and the septic review would be conducted by the county department of health as it is in all situations outside water and sewer districts. And that would have to be issued before any building permits were issued. So I think this sums up what's being proposed in the subdivision and I'll turn it back to you now, Madam Chairman.
Thanks. How do you want to say anything before we open it to the public?
No, I think you summed it up pretty well. We had the seaker review was completed at the last meeting. We had a couple of site visits. Do you want to talk about those now or wait until afterwards?
Probably we'll talk about those afterwards.
Okay, sure. Then, no, nothing else for me.
All right, great. So in that case, can I get a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Seconded?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. So who is here to comment on this application? Is there anybody?
Just me.
I heard. I thought the CSC was making a petition. I don't know about that. They mentioned they were going to do it in their last meeting.
Margaret's in there, check with Margaret.
Margaret? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, what? That was two different conversations.
Margaret, you were just telling me that the CSC was going to comment on the aquifer, tertiary aquifer letter that you had that was discussed in your last meeting because Erin and everyone had said that they didn't seem to, they contradicted it in your last meeting.
Well, maybe you guys could go out in the hall and figure out if there's something that you're going to comment on. But otherwise, I'm going to take comment if there's somebody on Zoom.
Okay, well, I thought that, okay. Yeah, I'll make more comments, but you can go to the center first if you want.
Oh, okay. If you're ready to make a comment, go right ahead.
Am I the only one who's got comments?
I think so, yeah. I think she'd come closer to the mic.
Sure, I can project it here. Okay, so we've talked a lot about the--
Say your name.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's Adelaide Snowe. I live down the street from this subdivision, not far from the driveway on lot two, which is on kind of a curvy spot. It's very tricky with driveways right there. And it's across the street, I think, from a new lot that has recently been built on 446. I've made a lot of comments on the record already about the environmental sensitivity of this land. And that's, there's a lot about that on the record. I just wanted to go over some things that I noticed in the zoning. And one thing that the CAC put in was Section 11 in your policies on general provisions. I just want to read it, it's a very short couple of sentences. Proper provision shall be made for leaving undeveloped natural areas and corridors to mitigate the adverse environmental impacts of subdivision and to sustain a diversity of native vegetation and wildlife to protect water resources, agricultural land and scenic view sheds, and to implement the town's policies of protection of its environment and cultural resources pursuant to the master plan and zoning law. So, and there are other provisions in the environmental, for environmental protection that I haven't heard discussed with this application. And I'm not entirely sure that they're relevant because I'm not, but we'd have to study it.
The thing is, we had a public hearing on the environmental questions and on seaker. This is a public hearing about the plat itself and about the--
Well, this plat shows no environmental information. So this is in an area where there's like all sorts of wetlands and all sorts of steep slopes and various natural resources.
We were aware of.
Right. Okay. So the plat that you're showing has none of that on there. I guess this one, now that they turned it over, does. My biggest concerns were limiting this subdivision to further subdivision because it's in a five-acre lot. So these sound like large lots, but any buyer could come in and assume that they could subdivide it further. And I think that would be really detrimental to the environmental issues here. The other thing that I was concerned about was that I've been told from experts I've spoken to that this was segmentation because you're not putting all of the environmental data or placing the houses and really analyzing the environmental impacts of future development because the developer is now saying, well, we don't know what we're going to build yet or we may not build or whatever. So there hasn't been a full build-out review. And from what I can tell in terms of whether or not, you know, this-- because if it was to go to be further subdivided into five-acre lots, there would be a lot more environmental damage. So I don't see any restrictions of further subdivision that you've put on the record yet. Am I wrong about that?
There was nothing yet, but we haven't gotten to that.
Okay. I just asked, I just want to read this answer I got about segmentation because if you don't do that full analysis of the further subdivision, it is considered, you know, possibly segmentation and more than likely segmentation. So when I asked that question to a land use planning attorney with extensive experience in this area, I got the answer that the failure of the planning board to evaluate the environmental impacts of the anticipated residential development of the project could not be deferred to the time of construction, which is what I hear you saying. The construction of houses and residential infrastructure on that property at a later date would be accomplished through the issuance of a building permit and the planning board would not be involved. Most certainly, you would have strong grounds for arguing that the environmental review had been improperly segmented. So that's one thing I wanted to put on. And the other thing was that we mentioned that CAC letter where they said that this property was in an aquifer, significant part of it, and that they were concerned. It's their letter of October 3rd where they say, we note, this is the last thing we'll read in the record, we note that the map of the water resources included in the town's 2023 natural resource inventory indicates the significant portion of the clear property on the north side of Woodstock Road is in a tertiary aquifer recharge area, highlighting the need to avoid development in ways that would disrupt or contaminate drinking water. And this is the letter I brought up to you after the last meeting when Erin or somewhere on the record said that it wasn't in an aquifer. And this is the letter, I wanted to be sure, wasn't contradicted.
Thank you for the comments. Is there anybody else that has a comment on this application? Is there anybody on Zoom? Yeah.
Do I have people around?
Oh, okay.
She's muted. She has her phone on mute.
Okay. You're muted.
Here I am. I just wanted to say, I know you've talked about putting a restriction on further subdivision on each one of these lots. I happened to sit with someone at a Duchess Land Conservation meeting who actually owned a property that had this exact sort of restriction on the lots. And it was done by the prior owners before the DLC existed as a means to protecting the open space in Millbrook. So I don't know if you're familiar with that, but it has been done in the past and it's not an unusual thing for our town.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Is there anybody else on Zoom? Okay, all right.
I have one more question. I'm at 446. I see the yellow lines drawn physically around lots.
I'm sorry, can you come up from and give us your name?
Yeah, my name is Grant Newhall. I live at 446 Stanford. I see the yellow lines around the lot that you guys have put in with the tape the last few days. The driveway does concern me. It's right at my driveway across the road. I'm not saying I'm fully against it. I just would like to see the yellow tape show me where that driveway actually physically in the lot because I just see the larger outline is made physically on the property, but I haven't seen any note of where the actual driveway exits to the street.
Right.
It does concern me, apart from Adelaide's comments about the watershed. It is across, right across the road from my driveway. And I share her concerns about further subdivision. So I would just say that.
And I'd just like to add about driveways. I went through that with from that subdivision that was between me and this one. And driveways were a big issue. It was a huge problem because it's a very curvy road and there's a lot of, there's a blind curve before you come through my house. And that's right in that area. And people come down and pass through on Stanford pretty quickly. So driveways in that area. And I agree with Ledger Connington, he said last time, and a couple of other people that were opposed to lot two for that reason and a lot of other reasons, mainly that giant beautiful wetland that's there too.
Thank you. Okay. So with nobody else speaking, can I get a motion to close?
Can I say?
Comment after the public hearing.
We can comment after the closing. We have another one. Oh, okay.
Hi, Andrew Johnson. I'm with the Orvis Company. This is Scott MacRae with the Orvis Company. First of all, just thank you for, thank you, Madam Chairman, and thank you for the board for going through the right channels to make this process happen. So thank you. But we, at the Orvis Company, we do support the subdivision. We are, our property touches, I think, four and five, as you want, yeah, on there. And also, just to note that at the Orvis Company, we're open 363 days a year and we do make sound on those 363 days.
Julie made it.
I live right next door too. Okay. So with that, can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
And seconded?
Seconded.
All in favor? Thank you very much. So I think we, as a board, wanted to discuss a few things. First of all, we all went to the site sometime. Was there any thoughts?
Yeah, I have a question. And Chair Wolfnix, it's a rambling question. It's really sparked by the visit to the site. The planning board's job, we talk through a lot of regulations, a lot of environmental regulations, a lot of town code. We also have an obligation to the town's plan. And reading the town plan, it calls for maintaining a rural community. We envision protecting our town by ensuring that our working farms, beautiful historic landscapes, water resources, natural habitats for our plants and animals are preserved for the future. This is one of the most beautiful plots of land in the town. Visiting it and envisioning how it might change with the subdivision, the addition of three or four more homes, another 10 cars. We saw delivery vehicles when we were there on the dirt road. And so you had another four families. You had another 20 visits, whatever it is. I'm just trying to sort of reconcile how this proposal to add that much to one of the most rural areas of the town sort of works with the wishes of the larger community that wrote and approved this plan in 2015. The plan even talks about maintaining the rural roads, the unpaved roads. So I don't know if we're looking for answers here, but I just have a bit of a hard time reconciling the scope of this plan with the wishes of the town.
You said four houses, but I think there are only three building lots. So is there a fourth that I'm not aware of?
Well, I don't know. I'm not sure. Maybe I missed something. Someone living in that fourth house?
There's two existing houses, only three.
And someone's living in that house? Can they?
Yes, we have a situation.
I'm sorry?
It's occupied.
Okay.
Yeah.
So yes, three more. So take my numbers back. That's eight new cars, that many more things. So, I don't know, it's a question, a comment, just something that I'm concerned about. I wanted to share.
All checked for the visits?
I was struck by how thoughtful it was, how thoughtfully it had been planned to be cognizant of the natural area around it, of the open spaces, of protecting views, talking about the lot south. Is this north? Is it facing north?
Yeah.
So the lot south that's on Stanford Road, apparently there are four potential lots that could be developed, but the lot, the building envelope that's outlined there was chosen because it has a very minimal impact on that view shed. The other lot to the west, we walked back in there and again, I was struck by the fact that it was thoughtfully placed so that it would minimize any visual impact. The one to the northeast would sit above any water. And one of the things I was also struck by is houses were above it. The houses to the east are above it. And I remember water being an issue that we talked about and runoff, water running off down into other people's houses or onto Stanford Road. I remember that coming up as an issue. But I don't know if the water could run up because the plots we're talking about are here. The road is above it. And then the houses are above that. So it seems to me the water would be running down to the west and to the south. And I think ultimately, nobody wants development. I mean, who wants development? Nobody wants anything to change. I don't want things to change either. I love Millbrook just the way it is. But things do change. And we have these zoning laws in place to consider and a board in place to consider. And based on what I've seen, I thought that this was a very thoughtful approach to a proposed development or development of some parcels in a 90-acre parcel that it really took into account the whole rural quality of things. So that was my take.
I'll just point out, this is not a development project. It's a subdivision.
That's a good point, thank you.
And the concept of development, these building or construction. And there's no proposed construction yet. But there are proposed building envelopes where designated construction will only, construction can only be provided or built with it. And we walked the site and those building envelopes are pretty good in terms of avoiding any environmental impact. We're very careful to look at that.
But you don't have independent review of the environmental issues that you've studied.
This project went through almost a full environmental impact statement.
Public portion.
Without this portion, this is--
But it is a really important point. We're not going to have back and forth.
But I will just remind you, just the public, I'll remind them that this project went through pretty much a full environmental impact statement. And the issues of the turtles, the wetlands were all discussed. We don't, I'm not an environmental expert, but I can tell a wetland when I see one. And I can see where the, where the proposed building sites are on high ground and they're not, there's no, there's no chance that they would impact the wetlands except for some runoff from the building site. So my issue with this restricting further development, so say we allow these lots or this subdivision to go through, if it were going to be a cluster project, we would restrict, totally restrict any further development by having the rest of the land put in conservation. And I've always said that this seems to be like a trade-off. Since we're not going to have cluster development and we're going to allow this kind of subdivision, we should still try to keep in mind that we're trying to conserve open space. And so I'm interested in finding a way to restrict further development because two of these lots can be further developed. There is enough, and there's enough space on them to build another residence. So the owner has said to us, he didn't mind restricting further development, but not in perpetuity. He wanted to have something like a 10- or 15-year window where that could be. That's not so much an issue for me, but that was the owner's preference. I think, I would like to look at it more like a minor subdivision where the building lots are permanently restricted from further development and segmentation. So, or any thought of segmentation. So I don't know how to handle that legally, but your memo that you gave us today, I don't see that it's in the public interest to restrict it, but I do see environmentally it's in the interest to restrict it further development. But not, this is not a public interest other than what the public interest applies to the, to what you were referring to, that we want to keep--
It is a public interest. I do want to say that that is legitimate, just like the environmental concerns, the particular sensitivities of the site. Those are legitimate public welfare issues.
Okay.
And so on.
Thank you.
And I think there has been discussion, as you've noted, it's something that after this meeting, I think we can continue a dialogue with the applicant perhaps on that subject. And I will just note for the public and for the board, you know, you want, if any restriction and approval should you grant one just needs to be tied to some legitimate concern. So, you know, you would focus, I think, on where are the portions of the site that are real concern, not a general condition, but things like that. The other thing I do want to say too is that, to speak to your point about the plan, I assume you're talking about the comprehensive plan?
Yes.
The master plan, right? So just a little background on how that functions. That is a, you think of it in business terms, almost like a strategic plan for any town, right? It's supposed to look forward. And over time, as the arc of your town in terms of local laws that your town board adopts, changes to the zoning, you are supposed to move things more in the direction that expressed will of the people as to its master plan. But the expression of that is had in the zoning code itself. So in other words, the zoning code is still the guiding, the primary guiding principle as you go along. And then as your legislative body over time may deem, because of public hearings like this and issues and identification of resources and things, the board may over time, as I say, have it sort of embark in a direction that's viewed as valuable. But it is important to keep in mind that the, as I think you've noted, that the zoning code is the expression of that master plan in the here and now. And so that has to be, you know, that's, there's a property right involved in what the zoning code says today. And that has to be balanced with these--
So how does that, how does that account for the discretion of the board?
Well, the board has discretion within, again, when any concern of the board is reasonably tied to an environmental impact or some legitimate public welfare concern, then the board has discretion, just like it has discretion in theory to deny a subdivision or to grant fewer lots than are being requested by an applicant. If that weren't true, then what was the point of the subdivision? If that weren't true, then what would the point of the subdivision process be at all, right? I mean, you would just, you would just draw lines according to the zoning and if it worked, you know, you'd be out. So all of these things are valid concerns and, and again, it's, it is always a balancing test between the, you know, really constitutional right to develop property against the overall welfare of the community. So you just need to point, as I think you have been careful to do, you, you need to point to specific issues of concern for you that you, that, that may lead to the discussion of perhaps even the consent to a condition that makes.
I think we're finding that a lot of the board members are, do have this main concern about the further subdivision. You know, a lot of us are expressing that or might even be going further and have bigger concerns. But certainly we've spent months looking at this application and this subdivision. And so for us to then think, well, in five years, one of those homes is going to come back and want a subdivision again, you know, that, that's problematic for us. So I believe that. Do you agree?
No, I do agree, but I'm just going to move ahead. How do we implement it? In other words, is it through deed restrictions? Or is there some, is it through your resolutions?
Yeah, it could be part of a resolution of approval. It would be a condition.
You're saying deed restrictions?
Yeah. Well, I mean, deed restrictions.
So the only way deed restrictions are enforced, because the town doesn't enforce deed restrictions, is through neighbors or adjoining properties bringing a suit. True?
Thanks.
Right.
Okay. Just so, so that.
But can it be part of the subdivision approval? It's a condition of the approval.
Yeah, in the resolutions, yes.
It's something that, that's not something that the neighbors have to enforce. That would be something that the town wouldn't be granting another building permit for. So.
Oh, very good. Yes.
I have a question. If we, if, sorry.
Go ahead.
If we, just speaking in a very macro way, if one was to put in, in perpetuity, a restriction on this lot, how does that impact other parts of Millbrook that have five or 10 acre zoning that have larger lots that want to be further divided? Does that impact, does this have any kind of impact further down the road?
Precedent.
Yeah, precedent. You mean, does a deed restriction restrict other properties?
No, she's saying what if we do this here, what does it mean?
It's a supppressant.
Is it supppressant? Does it mean that someone?
I think it is. You consider each, each subdivision on its own basis.
I, I think that's true. But again, I just want to reiterate that you, you would have to tie such a condition on a particular lot to particular concerns that you can identify in the record. Otherwise, what you would have is sort of an ad hoc, you'd be doing ad hoc zoning.
Yeah.
Right? I mean, and, and so I think you have to be careful about that, right? The other thing I do want to say with respect to segmentation, which is a serious issue and I'm glad it's come up, is that the standard for that is whether or not some future environmental review would, would by breaking up the process be less intensive than it would be if you had considered everything all at once. And I, I respectfully submit that that's unlikely to be true here. The, the, for what is being proposed right now and given the fact that there would be, according to your code, further review of any development site there. There, there's, there's no reason to believe that there wouldn't be sufficient impact on the review of a subdivision.
I can, I agree with that. And also just to add to it, you know, the NEGDEC and the record pretty much talks about three houses as like the project throughout it. So it's not like we ignore the fact that there's going to be three homes here. We talk about traffic. We talk about water and sewer. We talk about disturbance on the lots. It's all in there. And, you know, a, a single family house to be built on one of these lots down the road is a type two action under seater. Just what it is. So I think we took a hard look at all the possibilities with the subdivision. The applicants showing three development lots are proposing three building envelopes. And that's what the environmental review studied. It wasn't ignoring home development. And like I said, individual, a single family home on a lot, up to three family development on a lot is a type two action. So it wouldn't really require any more environmental review when it goes to the building department for a permit. So I just want to call that out too.
Okay. So where do we go? Paul had a question.
Paul has a question.
I don't have an opinion either. As a subdivision, I'm always thinking of the history, historically, what we've done.
I think that's Sharon's slogan.
Can the, can the person who's speaking please mute?
Okay.
Historically, what we've done is preliminary and final conditions of approval. And with agreement from the applicant that specific building lots with deed restrictions on further development. So that way it kind of covered everything from every perspective so that it wouldn't be contingent upon the neighbors. You know, if they came back again for further subdivision, it was already limited by that final approval.
So at this point, what did we as a board want to do?
Could you, were you going to say something else?
Oh, I initially I thought you were looking to me to suggest what we might do next, but I, but I don't want, so I don't want to.
I mean, my thought, our thought was that you and/or Aaron maybe help us, guide us in trying to work out some conditions that would satisfy both the board and the, Mr. Clear, could look.
I, I think that sounds right up for the next meeting. We'll have some support.
We can discuss that at the next meeting. You'll have something for us to review and then we.
Even both of them.
Okay?
Yeah.
There'll be another public hearing. Because this is a preliminary plat, that this is a public hearing.
Yeah, but there won't be another public, or a final. I don't think there is a.
Those are required.
Yeah, the only, unless the, the, there would be a significant, a material difference between the final plat as proposed and the preliminary plat as approved, there wouldn't be a necessity of another. So it would have to comply with whatever the preliminary approval. If it were approved.
Jim, could I just make one statement to clarify a purely factual issue? There was a comment that there was no information on this plat, on the plat, which was the plane map that referred to the constraints. This was discussed in the very earliest meetings. And we were told by the county clerk's office that they simply don't have the wherewithal to file a colored map like this with so many details. So what was going to happen was that we would agree to put a note on the plaque, which is the simple drawing on the other side, having a lot of notes that would say that there is a constraints map. It's on file with the planning board. So it would be purely there. And of course, all of the environmental review that you did is a matter of record. So I just wanted to clarify that, that there is, there are going to be references on the filed map to this specific drawing.
I would also like to say that.
And also that the, that the building envelopes are going to be placed on the plat as filed.
That was the end of the class, right?
Yeah, but the building envelopes are going to be shown and the import of them would be stated. And also it would refer to the.
Right. So, but I would also like to see that that reference is indicated in the resolutions.
Yes.
Okay. Great. Well, thank you. Next matter is Ruben. Is Mr. Ruben with us? This is a pre-application meeting that's, where somebody has some questions before they file an application or as they consider filing an application. And this is regarding a special use permit for an inpatient substance abuse program.
Hi everyone. Happy New Year. I'm not such a public speaker. I lost my voice. I live in New Jersey, not too far from here, about an hour and a half. I have two facilities in Ohio that deal with substance abuse, mental health, lower income inpatient facilities. These two facilities are, they're, they're locked, they're not locked down, but they're secure. Meaning I'm going to tell you a little about, about the business and then I'll explain to you why I'm looking at a property here. The business, the, it's not a big moneymaker, but it's very helpful for community, the aspects working on the community, the people in the community. But it is basically people who have a problem in their homes or with different things that they got involved with, whether it's either alcohol or substance abuse. And they come to this facility either mandated by, by either a judge or, or some other, but, but it's a lower income. It's not the private pay type of thing. It's more Medicaid. It's run Medicaid, all Medicaid actually. And, and the facility acts as a family for them. It's, it's not a loud, boisterous area. It doesn't turn into, it's, it's a very confined and they, they don't leave the facility. I mean, if they walk out, they're out. They're allowed to leave. It's not a jail, but if they walk out, they're out. So it's, it's pure, but it's, it's locked. If you look around the state, New York state, is, I used to have an adult home in Syracuse. So I know a little bit about this, this, what was there before. Greenbrier was there previously. And the, the adult homes are not, they're not, they're not able to run by themselves without, without big money, but it's not worth it usually for the amount of money they're getting back on, on, on the SSI patients or general. It's basically adults in your limits. A lot of these buildings are all over the state. They're falling apart and there's really nothing to do with that. I opened up two facilities in Ohio.
Mr. Ruben, I think you're giving us maybe a bit too broad scope. But you have some questions about this.
I, you know, I want you to know a little bit about it first. I, I understand that that's not the point. I'm not going to talk for a half hour, trust me. Basically, it's, it's locked in and it's gated around. Now, the facility, if you look at the zoning factor of this facility, I'm not going to tell you straight out that it fits into this type of group home. But it is family oriented. It is closed. It's quiet for neighbors. I have a place upstate that, that, that I'm living next to. I go there for the summers that have, that have a facility next door. You never see that. It's not a, the complaint, I saw the complaint online from some neighbor, which is fine. I understand. But he, he mentioned that there's traffic, there's no traffic. You don't see the people that come in. They come in for healing. They, they, they stay for 30, 90, 60, 90 days and they go home to normal family life. That's basically what it is. And it's really targeted. It's community targeted. It's targeted for, for, for people who never had a chance to, 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 to understand these, to get this, this type of, of, of care. It's, it's, I know that the zoning aspect is an issue. I don't know how they had the Greenbrier adult home, how they got, how, how, how they fit into the zoning aspect.
So, so maybe that's what we can talk about.
Okay.
Let's talk about the zoning, which I think is the middle issue here. So, and.
Okay. So it's, this is the RH1 district. The prior use was grandfathered in, which means that it was pre-existing non-conforming, right? So if you look at the, what's allowed by right in the RH1, it's pretty limited. It's dwelling unit, single family is permitted as principal use. There's accessory uses permitted by right, which are uses customarily incidental to any principal use, which is a house, like a garage, a home occupation and a swimming pool. Special use permits are allowed in the RH1, but only for, for uses, which are barn conversions, bed and breakfasts, two-family dwelling and a home occupation. So inpatient treatments facilities, medical facility of any kind is not a use that's permitted in the zone that either is principal use or a special use. So you have a zoning issue and that you're proposing something. It's not, it's not permitted. And you have a pre-existing non-conforming use that's now discontinued. And the code is pretty clear about discontinued uses not being allowed to continue in any other similar form or in the form that they're in when they were discontinued. So I don't really see a path for this without petitioning the town board for allowing this use or getting a use variance, which is, those are both very hard things to do, as you may know. So I think that's really the issue. It's just not permitted and the existing use is closed now and it's not allowed to continue. So.
Yeah, I wasn't really proposing to use the existing use because it is different in the way it's run.
It's, but it's just not permitted.
I know. I was wondering on the special permit aspect or, or, or some other type of way to, because the building really has no other usage. Yeah.
Okay.
Let's see, Ron.
Okay.
So I'm not.
Paul is a former chair.
Yeah, I'm not speaking to your ears. As the former chair of the planning board, we entertained two halfway houses, which I'm in favor of, and one inpatient drug treatment, which I'm in favor of. But the board determined that it's inappropriate for this town to have those type of facilities. So we're, it is honorable that you have this in mind. Aaron made a comment that it's a, it's not even a continuation of pre-existing non-conforming, but just to let you know before you go through an extensive procedure, we've already entertained it and while prior decisions are not necessarily, your decision wouldn't be predicated on those, just be aware that this town has in the past not supported that use on three different pages.
Oh, three. Okay. Three is good.
That's right. I'm sorry.
No is fine also. I, I don't own the property yet. I'm, I'm looking at purchasing it. I, I really liked the feedback. That's fine. I'm saying that no is, is better than a yes and, and better than a maybe. And I just go through the whole, it's fine. If you, if you don't feel it's, it's going to work there, it's fine. That area.
The zoning just doesn't work. That's something that you have to, there will be a lot of hoops for you to jump through.
I think that those, those two pathways that Aaron identified, which, which are really the only pathways by which you can achieve, which is either a zoning change or a, or a zone text change, which would allow a use like this, because it sounds like you're, you're trying to make a distinction between maybe the perception of these uses and what your use actually is. There may be arguments there, but that was, those are the arguments you'd have to make to the town board. Or you'd, you'd go to the ZBA for a use variance, which is again, as you may know, is a high standard to achieve. So as you consider purchasing the property, I, the only thing I would suggest to you is that if, if, if you really like the property and would like to pursue it, you know, notwithstanding the feedback tonight with the zoning issues, you, you really should consult with a, with a landes attorney.
My attorney's on that.
Okay. So, so then, then I'm sure they'll, they'll.
No, I understand. I understand this totally. It's not like, I'm not trying to fight it. I want to, I want acceptance before I start such a project. It's left, it's long, you need all the state approvals as well. That's a long, that's a whole different thing. It's not like the regular.
Can I just ask, what, what's your sense in pursuing this and the demand for these services in this community?
So it's on the, on the lower income facilities, there's very few. They're far between, they're, they're not functioning properly. They're not running well. And, and it's, it's, it's a, it's a necessary.
No, I'm asking that you're, I don't, you know, the capacity, what's the demand?
So the demand, you, you have to look at, at each area and see if it's, it's sustainable. Also, you don't know what's, it's really, you're jumping in.
You haven't looked at it.
I, of course I did. Yeah, I, I know. There's a need everywhere. New York is, the world is crazy these days. We all know that. So there is a need everywhere and most, most places are doing outpatient. Outpatient is destroying so many younger adults who don't get a chance. They, they come to the facilities and they go back home to the same garbage, you know? So we, we started something, we were three nursing home operators in Ohio and we, we, we had two empty facilities and we, and we, and we just started it out of the blue and it's beautiful.
Yeah, no, no, I'm sorry. I was just, and I.
May I ask a question now?
Yeah.
Have you seen the inside of the, have you toured?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's a dump. I'd have to put a million to dump.
I was going to say, the fire department, we have gone in and.
I know that, I know that.
It's so, it's so bad.
I'm not even, that's why I'm having this meeting. I don't know.
Yeah, it's not even a happening.
I know, I know, I know. Sure, I told you.
A million of dollars.
Yeah. Nice to meet everyone.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
And good luck.
Thank you for good luck.
No. No. I know, but it's not real applications. We, it's not all through that. Well, that's a whole, it's going to be a whole thing. You'll hear about it then.
Everyone here in favor of this? I just heard you say yes.
Where do the people go who live there? There may be listeners. Aren't there a couple of people that live there? Do we get a notification?
In the mail.
Certified.
It's a legal requirement. Yeah, a legal requirement. Okay, thank you.
Opportunity to rezone.
No.
You can hear about that from the town board.
You guys wouldn't, without us knowing about it, it's your neighbor.
So that would be the town board.
Whatever it says in song. I knew that.
Okay. A lot of support for that, right? Should we start? Should we start the next?
You're here for detox. You're getting some.
Hi, everybody. Thank you. Can we clear the window? We have another application.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go. So, okay, so the next application was from, um, for four forty-three Valley Farm Road. And that is a property that is basically within with a hundred foot wetland buffer. And they are looking for a seven hundred and forty-three square foot addition. And they needed a wetlands and water course permit for that. So.
They're not here, right?
I don't think they're here and Aaron is going to talk to us about that.
Um, so this is a, an expansion of a home, a non-conforming structure. It's non-conforming because it's in the wetland buffer. I think it's also, there might be other non-conformities because this lot has like four houses on it. Um, you know, I don't know the history, but either way, uh, this require any expansion of a non-conforming structure. As you know, in the code, um, up to twenty-five percent requires a special permit from the ZBA for that expansion. Um, they're proposing.
Nineteen seventy-one.
Yeah.
I don't know about that, but, uh, it's a non-conforming structure and the code is clear about.
It says it depose.
About. It's not three ninety-one point seven anymore, but.
Or whatever you change it to.
Right, well, twenty-five percent of the floor area of the house has existed, right? I don't think this house existed back then. I don't think it's that old.
Well, you can't expand it. This is, that existed by nineteen seventy-one.
This is an old house.
I'm not sure. I don't know.
It's an old house.
I think it's an old house.
I saw in the property card, those, again, it's confusing because there's multiple buildings on it, but there was dating back to the fifties construction records. So it's probably old enough for it to, to meet this requirement. It's, it's also a very small addition. It's not up, it's way less than twenty-five percent.
It is less than twenty-five percent.
Yeah, it's not over twenty-five percent. Um, and it's a sunroom, is my understanding is the, the reason for it. And it's pretty much, you know, laterally extending on the house. It's not moving towards the buffer any, any. Either way, the ZBA has to approve the expansion.
First.
First. Um, and it's been, you've seen a number of these applications already in a few this year where.
That's why I asked you this question.
Okay.
I'm, I'm speaking to the board.
Yeah.
Sorry, we could talk after.
Yeah, but you keep interrupting.
The ZBA can talk about it more because we're telling them to go to the ZBA because it doesn't belong here yet. Um, so, right, so the expansion would require that special use permit. Um, and they can condition that if they approve it on the planning board, um, granting a wetlands permit and a site plan approval. Because site plan approval is required anyway already. But this has the extra wrinkle of they're expanding within a buffer. The house is already mostly within the wetland buffer. It's a pond that's, uh, adjacent to the house. Um, so we don't have a comment memo for this. We thought it would be best to just, uh, tell the applicant to apply to the ZBA for the expansion first. Uh, and then if it comes back to you, they'll have, you already have an application on file. We'll just start the review of it then. They should just, they should apply to the ZBA for their next available deadline.
They need a wetlands permit.
Right, that's what they, they applied for, for you, but it's, makes more sense to get the ZBA review of the expansion prior. And like I said, they can condition that on the planning board reviewing for a wetlands permit and a site plan review, which they've done before. That's it. And they're, the applicant's aware that's why they're not here. Um, they're going to pursue a, an application to the ZBA. Timing TBD.
Okay, TBD.
Yeah.
Um, I think that's it. Does anybody have any other matters to discuss?
I'd like to talk more about the clear application. Is that an appropriate thing for us to discuss here and now?
What would be the forum for it?
Well, right now the applicants have left, so we are.
Why would that include us as a board to discuss? Not necessarily.
Not necessarily.
Because it's, it'll be on the record.
It's going to be on the zoom anyway.
Yeah, and I think some of the things we're touching upon are, at least in my mind, legal questions. And I don't know that, that some of those are appropriate for the public. I think, like, for example, your memo is to the board only and that might be worth some discussion because I had questions about it, but that's not for public consumption.
Yeah. So can we go into an executive session now where everyone else leaves and we simply discuss this issue? I think that would be preferred by everyone.
No, to discuss a legal memo, to discuss privileged matter.
So I think that's what we'll do. Like, I think that's really what everybody wants to, to do, have discussion with you, Joe.
Okay.
Thank you.
So you need, you need a motion to do that.
Oh, okay. So can I have a motion to go into executive session to this?
Salute.
Second.
All favor.
No.